I will now call to order the town of Elon Town Council meeting for March twenty seventh. If all who are able to stand will join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Right, moving on to the items on the consent agenda, the town clerk will please read those.
And it's letter A, March the fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Town Council Meeting.
Questions, comments? Have a motion to approve by reference to items listed on the consent agenda? Okay. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? You very much, maybe not proclamations, and we do have a proclamation related to Education and Sharing Day. And that can be found in the agenda if you wish to read it in its full link. But I do know that Rabbi Mindy is here to, um, to get a copy of that. And it is signed and ready for you to take with you today. Um, any questions on the proclamation? This is one that we do annually. Thank you Rabbi Mindy for being here and for bringing that to us. And Diane has your copy if you'd look like that. Moving on to public comments, this is an opportunity for the public to comment on their desires or wishes for the town. Each individual be granted three minutes, please sign in and state your name and address when you, um, address the council. Are there any public comments in the room today? On my mindy.
Thank you, do I sit here?
You can stand and then state your address for the record.
Okay, my physical address?
Yes.
I am at one oh seven Truro Drive. My name is Mendy and thank you, uh, Mayor Emily for the proclamation, which I'm happy to take soon. I just wanted to talk about it real quick, the time limit is three minutes, I just wanted to tell you what it is. And, and why I, I requested it, uh, because, um, we know that education is at the bedrock of every healthy society. And here in the town of Elon, which we're surrounded by educational institutions and by university buildings. It's certainly something that we almost breathe in the air. But education is more than only sort of learning skills for the acquisition of jobs and professions. But it's also the acquisition of, of morals, of good values and, uh, things of that nature. And Education Day is meant to, um, sort of give us a space, give us a time to reflect on the importance of those values in our society. And the contributions that Rabbi Menachem Shneurson, the Rebbe made in that, uh, in that field. And, um, the fact that even just literally this very day. A young woman picked up a weapon, entered a school and did something unthinkable reminds us the importance. And obviously I'm not in any position to tell you why she did that or why it happened. And that's way above my pay grade, but I can tell you that a solid educational foundation will definitely go a long way. In preventing fur- further act of violence inside schools and beyond. So thank you again for the proclamation and I hope that the proclamation will lead us into the real world, not only in the sort of, uh, you know, bureaucratic, but actually making changes in our own community. So thank you.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
The other public comment? Me online? We will close the public comment section, moving on to old business link transit update. Karen Catherine.
Good afternoon, um, so just as little history, um, you've seen this a lot. Uh, at the previous town council, uh, the council was updated with a massive pit stop stops. And a budget was provided, um, by John Ando, who was also present at the last. Um, we now have, um, the, uh, attached with the Pachi for the cost for the next fiscal year. Um, as twenty-eight thousand, three hundred and forty-seven and for that. And then, um, we're waiting for confirmation on the cost, but we have it as estimated as three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars and forty-two cents for this fiscal year, um, budget amendment. Um, we have an edited, uh, draft interlocal agreement, um, that will be included in the town manager's presentation as well as the, um, drafted, uh, resolution. Um, so the drafted local agreement and draft resolution were provided by Mr. Ando and reviewed by, uh, town manager and by our attorney as well as John and their attorney, make sure that everything was ironed out. Once the interlocal agreement has been reviewed, um, by the city attorney, which is still with them. And there was some language that needed to be edited, um, sent to the town manager for signature. And then you will either vote to adopt or deny the draft resolution as well. Um, after that, Mr. Ando will present the league agreement to the Burlington Council. And it will be approved or denied there as well. One aspect of being a part of the transit system is identifying community members to be Elon representative in the Burlington Public Transit Advisory Commission. The role will be advertised and volunteers will be presented to the council for appointment. We are hoping that once everything is solidified, we will aim for a starting date of, like, first, point two-three. Um, attached are the cost chart, the addition map, the revolution, and we want to have IBA edits. Um, are there any questions you have at this time about the map or the cost chart or edits to the IGA resolution?
Just wondering, I know that it's a yearly, um, contract, is there any way to try and? Yes, we probably can, once we signed a five-year contract where we could keep that where it's at. I mean, it'd be nice if it didn't go up. I don't know what we're doing that.
I don't, if it was, if you have any?
Yeah, I will, just to respond to that, uh, you did notice from John that our actual budget has dropped for next year. Down to, uh, down to twenty-eight thousand from thirty-four. Because there was a change in the reimbursement through, uh, Transportation Department. That will change year to year, so there really is no way to lock in an amount, uh, going forward. We have a little bit of the big degree every year of subsidies they get. They have to agree on meetings or something like that even, so fortunately no.
I had a careful question, and you said that was thirty-four, but look at this chart, it was a weekday and Saturday rate. But that one day, it's fifty-eight hundred dollars opposed to this other days, right? It's twenty-eight thousand.
So that's. This chart was real, I, I had a hard time understanding this chart until I asked John exactly, did I get this one correct, but the first step. Yeah, um, so just ignore the Gibsonville cost and Burlington cost and all that. What he has, uh, highlighted is that, so the weekday would be the three thousand and the inbound, outbound in total are the hours. And then the weekday, um, is what would be our share. That's how you explain it to me.
It's basically shared based on the cost, the amount of time.
As in our boundaries.
Have you been writing?
Yeah.
Anything in here that was significant?
So it was an edit to section five, I believe. Where we had conferred with our attorney and on the way that we can, uh, kind of, not like back out of our agreement, but the termination and I think it was. Yes, um, well, it was IV general, general provisions termination. And so that will be edited. We've already edited it, or already edited.
Interesting. The other changes that are in the version that was on your desk, um, a lot of them are, are just clarifications of references. But the one substantive change was referred to in the language about the act of resolution. And, um, they added a paragraph to the interlocal agreement that we will notify acta. Once we've signed on with link, that link is now our, um, now has the transit, uh, designation for Elon. So if there's duplication of services, link will, will be able to do those, not acta. If acta provides a service that link does not, acta will continue to provide that service to the extent it's requested in Elon. So that's a new, uh, paragraph under section two. And talks about if we expand our service to the extent that they need to buy new equipment or new people. We were on the hook for, for the, the, the capital cost of that kind of thing, uh, as well as the new personnel costs.
Through acta.
No, two, two separate issues.
Okay, uh, the court, um, you were talking about the cost, I thought you were still talking about.
Yeah, okay, there's, okay. Uh, the consent to Alaman Transportation Authority, we have, you're agreeing to adopt a resolution. Tell acta, link is now our transit authority, that one. Link is now our transit authority, so the, the same services that are provided, only link can provide those now. Services that acta provides that link does not, acta will be able to continue to provide those. One of the other changes that they made, just to clarify that if we increase our service area. To the extent that they can't do it within the existing route, they have to create a new route. Uh, we'll be on the, on the hook for cap, our share of the capital expenses and labor costs. We, we're getting a relatively low cost because we're splitting a dead part of their route right now. Running, they've been running, they're gonna run through Elon, so it doesn't really cost an extra to do it.
Uh, speaking of the route, I'm sure we talked about this before, but how often will we be able to make adjustments on that? He, any, so on a yearly basis, let's say that you find out after having it's a year that we need to have one possible stops or different stops, how often can that change? Or can that change anything?
I'm not sure, but I'll ask John, I will send an email out. I'm, it would make sense that after the, the year is, uh, we'll reevaluate.
Well, that's what I was thinking, but yeah.
Cost, yeah.
And that would be my assumption too, that would be yearly, such on a yearly.
And if I could, on page three of the IGA, under letter A, routes. Operating hours and routes are subject to modification as operating history and ridership is developed. Transit manager shall prepare an annual report for submission to all participating members in the public. So that kind of, you know, each year they evaluate all of their stops, all of their routes and make changes accordingly. So that would be that process.
And will we, will we only receive the annual report or will we have like a quarterly or monthly? Do we know if we'll get any additional reporting for that to, to monitor and regularly?
I don't know, we can, I mean, that they generate that data all the time. So we will also be asked to have somebody sit on the transit board. So we'll have a, we'll have a, you know, voting position on the transit board that would be getting those kind of reports as well, um, do a formal annual report.
Mary Catherine, I want to go back to that chart, uh, or if we look at Saturday or start with the weekday. Inbound to outbound one point eight, it is the total of three point eight. But if we move to Saturday, one point two plus one point two doesn't give us three point eight. Um, and is that how the calculation, did they use spreadsheet to make that price with three point eight? Of course, I just want to make sure the math with, when it comes to the pricing. And they, they did it for, you know, Gibsonville and Burlington, it just looks like it went down. So what are we multiple, that's the amount of hours spent.
Right.
That costs ninety-nine dollars and seventy-seven cents per hour.
Yes.
It really wasn't explained, obviously, we know the stops, but how many cycles would you expect for them to make a journey down? On, on a daily basis.
I believe it's three or four times, because it has to go from Burlington all the way through both Burlington, Elon and Gibsonville. And so it's about an hour and a half, one way and then an hour and a half back, we said three or four times.
Rich, I wanted to, sorry, touch back on something, I, I, I think I misheard you, I just want to make sure. You said we'd be on the hook for route changes, staffing, did you also talk about vehicle maintenance?
Not maintenance, but capital cost.
Capital cost, so we could be?
If, if we tell them that we want to change our route and go from seven stops in Elon to fifteen stops, we want to go here, there and everywhere. That would require probably a new route for them to create.
Right.
Which would require new bus, new drivers, then we're on, we would be on the hook for our, our share of all of them.
Why would that require a new bus just because of?
They don't have any.
Okay.
I mean, they have, they have buses and drivers for all of their routes.
Gotcha.
We are piggybacking on an existing route.
Okay, I understand now, thank you.
So in essence, adding more stops, link, link in the cycle, which impedes other municipalities, Burlington example. Um, so that puts a more hardship on those riders, uh, as being inserted into the loop. So that's what you're saying, I think, is if we added seven more stops that was warranted. Uh, that would impede their ability to commit to their current cycles that they're doing now. Correct. We, we are fitting into an existing schedule. Makes sense. So instead of them driving from, um, I think their last stop is Food Lion on Church Street. And then they would drive all the way into downtown Gibsonville before they have their next stop. They're gonna cut through Elon and then up in downtown Gibsonville for their next stop. And it works out to be fair, not a whole lot different, they're able to do it on the existing cycles. You, if, no, if we were to, you know, move a stop from, say, Westgate to Green Street. That's, that's not going to change anything. But if we said, oh, when you hit Westgate, turn right and, and, you know, start going through that whole neighborhood and coming back out. That would add time to their route, which would affect the whole route schedule. Then they would be looking probably at perhaps breaking off, but you know, a different route or something like that.
Or if we wanted to like go up Walker Road.
Yes.
That is nowhere near their current route, so we'd be looking at. But of course, we don't have to worry about that and what's currently planned.
Not what's planned.
Um, we have a question, so initially you were asking for us to approve the resolution and the, um, the interlocal agreement, but we don't have that final interlocal agreement, so.
I, I did hear from John ten minutes ago that the language that we had submitted to them was, they had overlooked. He said he's fine with it, he'll have it inserted, and he said they'll, they'll, they'll approve it. So you can, I mean, if you wanted to approve the IGA tonight, they make it, approve it, engine on that language being added. So Burlington decides they don't want to add it, we're not obligating something we don't agree with. That would be, that would be your call, or we could wait and put it on the agenda for a vote on our next meeting, next week.
For me personally, I'd rather be able to read that language before voting on it.
That will not hold up your May first?
No, because Burlington's not meeting till next week either. I mean, that, and the only advantage to, is that we were meeting tonight, if you voted, Burlington was gonna vote next, next week as well, same night we meet.
They would have, um, the advantage of having it in advance like we'd like.
Right, we should still have that language.
For their next meeting.
They would know that we approved it before they voted, that would be the key for them. So.
You're saying there's no disadvantage if we wait?
The, the only, I guess, to rephrase it, the only disadvantage would be is if Burlington doesn't want to vote until after you've voted. Because they're meeting next Tuesday night on the fourth as well. So if they're meeting next Tuesday, if you haven't voted, delay their vote later in the month. Then that May first deadline becomes problematic.
I just think it's problematic to vote on verbiage that we've not seen.
And, and I don't have a problem with that, you know, that's, that's just the way it is. And the, the other comment I was gonna make is that the resolution that they gave us that we drafted was for the town managers or the city manager to sign the, the interlocal agreement, so that's what the resolution says. The interlocal agreement that they've revised, sent back to us, has the signatures of the mayor's on it. Again, I don't know the, the, the protocols of one versus the other, but the resolution doesn't match the document, so.
So we just need to move that to the next meeting agenda?
You, you certainly can, um, I mean, the al- the alternative is, would, would also be, you don't have to, we don't have anything for you to sign tonight. We could pull off signing it, um, if, if that language isn't acceptable.
Right.
I'm not comfortable putting that to a vote without seeing the verbiage.
That's fine, then, then we'll table.
It could be totally off guard from what we're comfortable.
They go ahead and table it till next week and that's, that's just the way it's, it'll be. We'll have, and by then.
Right, because we have an early meeting.
Right. So again.
Next week.
Yeah. Um, and we'll have all the final documents by then, as will Burlington and yeah, we'll just, we'll tell them that the la- final language wasn't available. Seemingly there's no opposition to the, to the concept. The decision whether they vote in their hands.
Is the, uh, resolution ready to go?
That's the act of resolution, uh, yes. Um, there's a, there's also a resolution in your packet, uh, that you will be doing budget amendment to approve the money and then you'll, you'll, and you'll consider adding it to your upcoming fiscal year budget.
I believe that we're, I firmly believe that we're all in favor of this. So that's why I understand the, the nature of worrying about the language, or I hope it doesn't hold anything up. Cause it sounds like sooner we get this on the ground, the better. Definitely, I would like to do anything we can to help, help that along.
I mean, I'll certainly convey that to John and to Craig and Burlington that, you know, it's, it's not a question of, again, seeming it's not a question of, should we or shouldn't we, it's so much of, we just want to see the language. May first, as opposed to, you know, May. I, just to start up a month, it could certainly, it could certainly slide to May fifteenth, I suspect. We change our budget numbers a little bit, uh, we drop them from whatever, you know. Again, we, we'd have that budget amendment next week and we should know if, if that's gonna work. I mean, so this will take some coordination with John, that if we go through next week to vote on it, what, what is, what is Burlington gonna do? They put it off till the third week of April, obviously we can't do a May first startup. It'll be May fifteenth then acceptable, or do we go to June first?
Are we making assumptions that if they vote on it the third week in April, that it can't be done on May first?
Only that. No, I'm making those assumptions because they need to redo their route schedules, all their printed information. There's no time to advertise it particularly. Again, I'm making those assumptions based on how I would try and do it. You know, I wouldn't even try and throw something out there a week later, a week and a half later. So would June first be a problem? I mean, obviously, I think, we, we may first only because of, of your media schedule. Maybe we want to make sure it's well advertised and promoted. There you got kind of, which, and I agree with the mayor, I'd like to see the verbiage before I vote in on it. Looks fine.
Yep, so we'll just bump that to sweet.
Okay.
Does that mean we also need to move the budget amendment to next week?
Um, if you wanted to do the budget event. Um, I'm trying to think of the, my, my thought was, you know, as a sign of good faith, if you will, adopted the budget amendment. You say know that you're serious enough to appropriate the money, we're just working on the language. I don't know the protocol, uh, about approving money without a project to go with it. I don't think there's a problem if you decide to do that. It all fell apart, it, it just goes back into fund balance anyway. So we're making that thirty thousand, what if that's gonna be upfront, so.
This is the fifty-seven sixteen, just for the rest of this year.
And it's actually lower, it's less than that, it's thirty-one fifty-one now.
Well, the budget amendment that we have isn't accurate either than.
Again, I got new numbers today.
Yes, so I think we just need to table that to next week, it's eight days, so.
I want to see the math of this, I was trying to figure out.
I'll get that from John.
I'm looking at the numbers, none of them have.
Yeah, nothing.
Those numbers mean.
I, I sense since of there's plenty of effort there are, uh, dollars from other sources and the matching dollars and all those things. So it doesn't sound like they're trying to put us in some negative way. It seems like it, what I've heard, maybe it's, or it's kind of about.
I, I would agree, and I think it's a question perhaps of our interpretation of what those numbers mean. You know, we're dealing with percentages of maintenance costs. So you know, that, that's, that's where I, I don't have a good answer for you on this at this point, uh, how that calculation actually works. Other than, like I said, the, the email I got from him today, um, the, the annual cost dropped to twenty-eight, three, and the May-June cost dropped to thirty-one fifty-two, fifty-two. Based on their timing and their hours.
Mary Catherine, you'll get with him on clarification on those numbers.
Yeah.
And you'll get us the updated resolution and the interlocal agreement to vote on this week.
Yep.
And you'll have that information by next week.
Oh, I don't. Really hard to write that.
Okay, awesome.
If you explain it to us, we'll be okay.
Yeah.
On the IGA, I don't know the answer to this, so whether the mayor's supposed to sign those or whether you want the managers to sign them.
It has the mayor's, they find, and Jim Butler's, they can do it now.
But the resolu- yes, it does, and the resolution he had originally given us had the manager signing it. I don't, do you know Diane what the protocol would be?
Most resolutions are by the mayor.
But interlocal agreements, the mayor.
Okay. All other, uh, lo- interlocal agreements that we've had in the past, it's not bad, I mean.
Right. So we'll change that resolution as well to reference the mayor signing it up.
Moving on to new business, um, we are being asked to set a public hearing date for Elon fire district tax rate. Schedule a public hearing for Elon fire district tax rate for April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three at six AM.
That motion?
Well, before you, before you make the motion, um, there's, there's two parts to that, or three, maybe three. One is, um, what you would like to pose as a fire district tax rate. And two is whether you want to hold the public hearing or you want the, um, county to hold the public hearing. The, the last time we did it, the county held it. I was informed by the, you should have a resolution. Set a public hearing date, not just a vote, which I didn't realize, a resolution for you. It really is, it makes no difference who holds the hearing. Uh, but we just need to be able to tell the county what, which direction we're gonna go in and what we're proposing for, um, or rate, or excuse me, tax rate.
What are your thoughts? I know we talked a little bit about this at the budget retreat, do you like to host the public hearing here or defer that?
My feeling is I would. It's our decision and their, Burlington heads had a step forward as far as what their feelings are, would it, would it be, not that they were, would interject their feelings into a public hearing whatsoever, but I would just personally like to hear it. Or counsel, excuse me.
The reason we did.
The reason we did. What reason we did the way we did last year.
Uh, in twenty twenty, the, we, we proposed increasing the. Tax rate from eleven cents to twelve cents on our fire district. Where honestly, it was right after I started, realized that we had an option. So I, I went to the county commissioners, explained their request, and then left. At some point, they held the public hearing and approved the increase to twelve cents. We increased it that penny because that we were taking on the debt for the new engine. Under the, uh, today, we're dealing with the revow, which is changing all the mill rates, tax rates. And at a recent meeting with all the fire chiefs in the county, the finance director was. Encouraging folks to go with a, a revenue neutral tax rate. Or a revenue neutral plus inflation. Example that they gave was if you used a seven percent inflation rate. So we could hear in, in the. Dialogue on the front part of your item. Uh, the revenue neutral. Tax rate would be point zero eight zero seven, eight point zero seven cents. That would give us a revenue of about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. If you use seven percent inflation factor. Raises it to eight point six two cents and three hundred and fifty six thousand dollars in revenue. For your reference, as much as anything else, I include an eight percent inflation. Turn it up to eight seven, eight point seven two and thirty five nine. And then I flipped it, sort of right, if you round it up to nine cents rather than all of the. Thousands. Nine cent tax rate would give us revenue of three hundred and seventy two thousand dollars. You're currently at three twenty three. We'll say since that tax rate was established. We've added. Two firefighters, if not three. I mean, we, we have made some investments in the fire department. Certainly, that, uh, we, we've borne at a hundred percent cost. That's worth for you.
What would be the benefit of having a go to the hearing being in front of Burlington? County, I mean, the county, excuse me.
They, they will hold a hearing for all of them. You know, all the districts that are proposing differences. And who, what's the counties? All your fire district? Much easier to have the county commissioners hold it because that's what they do. As opposed to a fire district. So our board of trustees or however they're organized. The, the other advantage that. I need to have a resolution for you to adopt, set the public hearing name. If that's how you wanna go, we'll have, we'll draft a resolution, have you adopt it next week. And we'll get the, the, it'll be advertised for the end, uh, for the end of April. There is a, I think it's a, there is a notice period that we have to include, uh, a public hearing like that.
You planned it how? You know a percent of how many county calls, just roughly? At all the calls?
Let me think about it, because, you know, we're breaking it down, probably. I'm pretty sure it runs somewhere between twenty three and twenty five percent.
About quarter of your calls.
I've seen it as low as, as fifteen some months, but we, we tend to stay around that low, close twenties. And I can give those numbers for you. Hold on a second, I'll get you last month's.
My concerns. We like our citizens.
These aren't residents, though. Seems to remember that we did have, remember this, probably like five years ago. Even like early on in me and the council. Seem to remember that we held a public hearing for the fire district. Did show up. But not a lot. Like a couple. I mean, for me personally, I would like to hear from them. If, if anybody would be very surprised.
It's not a disadvantage to us, then. That's what you're holding the hearing on.
Oh, so we're holding the hearing on that, so it's not that we make a decision and then post it for that? It's that these are the conversations that we're having and then we would.
Because you would be, the hearing is not on, I mean, if you left the, absent the revow. You left it at twelve cents like we have the last couple of years. Ever.
Stay in the same, no hearing necessary.
So if we were leaving it at that reven- you know, arguably, even the revenue neutral level. Although you have to hold it here, although we, it does change a little bit, but, um. Because we, we, we would be changing it, we need to hold a hearing.
Answer from us tonight if. If we wanna have a public hearing.
Do I need the answer tonight? Probably not. We can leave that as a fill in the blank on resolution, we'll get it next week. Kind of think about it and come back next week and talk about it some more. And like I said, then we will get advertised. We said, was it ten days or two weeks to notice?
Is it a fire task, remember, we didn't locate a. A designated. If that's just what we wanna do for the public.
What is it on a budget?
On budget is ten, no less than ten, no more than twenty five.
In, in the past, we've always done two weeks. Okay, more than ten, less than twenty five. So. We. On the fourth, um, we sent it over on Wednesday, we'd have it printed. Sixth or the seventh, that takes us to at least to the seventeenth in our meeting, I think it's the twenty fourth. So we'd, we'd have time to get the notice requirement in. After next week. That, that shouldn't be an issue. And, and it gives you a chance to explain. Whoever shows up. What, 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 what the money goes towards.
We did not have a recommendation that you just gave us.
Correct. The original budget amount that I had put in was about three sixty. When your revenue neutral obviously cuts that back. As you get closer, as you get up higher, uh, it gets closer to what I originally had budgeted for. Which was on a, on an incorrect valuation that the county had sent me. So I won't say that there's a whole lot of magic to it. Nine cents, three seventy two is. Eight point seven two versus the nine cents. It's a little bit over what I originally budgeted, one's a little bit under what I originally budgeted, so. A couple thousand, it's not a significant amount.
Eight percent. Give you as, as close as we can without going over.
Correct.
So we'll take a final decision and. That's that resolution next week.
That's fine, yep.
Um, I think it's also important that we have the next. Two conversations from now, as we kind of think about that for next week as well, around the latter week. I think we'll provide us with some good information as we start to think about that.
Yeah.
Mayor, can I just, um, ask one more question, I think that might be helpful? So if we say we want something here local. Town staff put that, that hearing together, or did the fire district volunteer at the fire department?
You were the board. You're the board of the fire district, Elon Fire District. Um, there, the fire districts are in parts of the county that don't have. You know, you know, local government. Then the fire district board would hold that hearing, or leave it to the county commissioners.
County commissioners have a final say? So let's say we wanted to keep it at twelve.
I, I, they, they approved the budgets, so presumably they could deny it. I, I don't know if they have in the past or not, or what.
Nonliving memory, but it's possible.
What would, what would come from it if they, you know, if they did that?
Ready? Thank you, uh, moving on to letter B, proposed fee schedule revision.
Good evening, mayor, members of the board. So I have a proposed fee schedule revision before you tonight. Um, and what prompted that was, um, conditional zoning was adopted last year in the early part of last year. However, our fee schedule was never amended to reflect conditional rezonings. Um, so right now, those cases are being charged the regular rezoning fee. Um, a regular rezoning has no site plan, there's no review, uh, PRC, et cetera. Um, so while examining the fee schedule, realizing that I need to add conditional zoning, I realized that a couple of other items were overlooked. So rather than waiting until July first and presenting it with the budget, I went ahead, um, and drafted a proposed revision. Here before you tonight, um, so you should have had two attachments in your agenda. One is, um, where I've looked at surrounding municipalities to see what they charge. And then the actual proposed revisions that I have, I'll go through them because they're very brief, planning has twelve items. Um, a lot of them are revisions, a couple of them, as I stated, are new. Um, the zoning permit proposed to increase from fifty to sixty dollars. Um, same with the temporary use permit, which is currently being charged at fifty, that would also go up to sixty. The rezoning and text amendments and special use permits are currently four hundred and fifty dollars plus the cost of mailed notices. My preference has always been to collect the fee upfront whenever possible, and not try to come back on the back end and collect it. Um, so we're proposing to change that to five hundred dollars, um, and that's when the project's submitted. Initial rezoning fee, as I stated, there's more review involved there, so we are proposing a fee of eight hundred dollars. Preliminary subdivision plan review, um, shockingly, we don't currently have a fee for that, so they're paying zero. So I am proposing five hundred dollars, ten dollars per lot, um, and that is comparable with other jurisdictions charged as well. Um, I think even more shockingly with site plan reviews, so commercial plans that come in. Um, also currently no review fee for site plans. Um, so looking at other jurisdictions, I kind of decided to tier this one. Um, multifamily would be a flat one thousand dollar review fee. Nonresidential would be five hundred dollars plus fifty dollars per one thousand square feet of gross floor area. Uh, major subdivision final plat, um, for, again, major subdivisions when they come into plat each phase. I'm proposing to increase that from one hundred to two hundred. Um, a sign permit and a fence permit, which are comparable to the zoning permits, also increasing from fifty dollars to sixty dollars. A text amendment to the comprehensive land use plan, um, so that also is currently not on our fee schedule. And, uh, Mary Catherine and I have had a couple of conversations with individuals who have considered amending the comprehensive plan. Uh, they have not submitted anything, but currently we do not have a fee for it. Um, so I'm proposing a fee of three hundred dollars. And lastly, a zoning verification letter, um, there's a lot of work on staff time and drafting those. So I'm proposing to increase that from twenty dollars to fifty dollars. Um, in doing so, I was talking with Phyllis, the Parks and Rec Director, and she asked if she could possibly kind of piggyback on this, um. Proposed fee revision, um, and she requested to include one fee revision for her department. Um, and that is to increase the deposit fee for the community center from seventy five dollars to a hundred and twenty dollars. I am proposing an effective date of April the third. Um, that would allow us time to make sure that everything is reflected in our software, so the fees are up to date. Um, so there's no difficulties when people come in, because we still have folks that like to come in to pay. No, uh, delays there. And if you have any questions of me about these proposed changes, I would be happy to answer them.
Was there a reason why she wanted to go from seventy five to one twenty? Have there been issues? And then loss of rental and.
She did not include that, um, in the email to me, but I believe there have been, in my discussions with her, there have been a few cancellations. Um, and so she did want to raise it, and when you look at, it took me a second to find hers as well, because she had different deposits. And I put hers in red as well. Yeah, different deposits for different structures in her, um, department, so.
Can just tell you. It's good to have a good deposit. They get it back, they, they generally behave, so it's not a problem, yeah. I agree.
I appreciate you finding these holes, but, you know, uh, zeros. And I, because it takes a ton of work by our staff and. Need to, you know, have that money being paid for, so.
It really does, and preparing for the budget also kind of opened my eyes, because when I went into the software and realized the revenue that been generated from my department, I was going. Um, and that's what made me reexamine the fee schedule going, wow, we are reviewing a lot of stuff and charging. And granted, we do have, for example, a TRC review, so you do pay when you have to be reviewed by the TRC committee. Um, but so far as staff time on all these reviews, there's been nothing charged.
So, Lori, do you, as far as kind of figuring these new costs? You compared against similar municipality sizes?
So who I specifically looked at, of course, I'm gonna look kind of to our neighbors, um, so I looked at Burlington, Graham, Hillsboro, Meven. Looked at Clemens, Summerfield, Fuqua-Verna, and Apex. Um, some just didn't have a lot of fee schedule, I mean, a lot of fees listed in their schedule, for example, Graham. I use them because they're comparable, um, but they really have a lot of links on their fee schedule, and I even called them like, hey, can we go through each of these to make sure I'm not missing something? Um, kind of saying.
They don't have a fee for.
Correct, and they tried to propose a revision according to their planner last year, and it didn't go over well, they did. Or to the residents, um, so it's as it is currently. Um, but it is staff time, um, that we have spent, for example, the conditional rezonings, um, that we've received and that have increased. And, and right now, they're paying four hundred and fifty dollars, the same as someone who just came in with a general rezoning and no site plan. Um, and there's been a lot of staff time spent reviewing these, several versions too, Mary Catherine can account to on these.
It looks like the vast majority of these, with the exception of a very small raise. They're really for developers. Or, um, large, large review type project.
They are, the, the smaller permits, we decide to go, only go up by ten dollars, even though they varied across the board. Some jurisdictions had them at a hundred, some had them at seventy five, I think one had it at sixty. Um, so yes, I didn't want to penalize the, the average student who comes in and wants to build a shed, um, so that's only like, was something very minimal there, sixty dollars. But yes, these, these other ones, and again, I didn't go, Summerfield has some interesting fees, um. I didn't go quite, you know, as far as those, um, but yeah, I tried to find a happy medium between the jurisdictions.
Any other questions for Lori?
I think this will deter any development having these types of fees.
Not at all.
Why would you think some of these other towns? There's not like, what, 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 if you. Assuming, uh, why they wouldn't have a fee for like zoning compliance, like Fuqua-Verna, not having a zoning compliance fee?
And it could be, so I couldn't call each of the jurisdictions to find out, um. And sometimes they pick it up in other avenues, for example, in talking with Graham, a lot of their fees are not collected within the planning department. However, they're collecting within their engineering fees and their inspection fees. So they're still kind of being collected, but into a different department. Um, and that's very common, particularly if you have, for example, a planning and inspections department combined, that one arm is collecting the fee rather than the other. Uh, yes, we basically, I basically looked at the different fee schedules and just not see anything there, that's not. That's not saying that Fuqua doesn't somewhere tucked in somewhere have some type of permit fee that I happen to overlook.
Other questions? Do I have a motion to adopt the proposed schedule changes?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Very much.
Alright. Moving on to the ladder truck purchase.
Yeah, I have a quick presentation.
It's in the, it's in the packet. Well, Brian's calling, this has been a a, a case study in frustration and anticipation and um, trying to pull something together. And uh, we've gone from having, you know, two-year wait to three-year wait. Gee, we can get in line now to, almost are gone. To finding out the, the, you know, the chief's saying, when there's already been a bit of process, we're gonna piggyback, we'd recommend piggybacking on, so.
Been a roller coaster ride since, since it started.
Yes.
I'll go ahead and get started, um, while she's bringing that up, I got a few vigil aids, but um, Mayor and Council, I come to you and I have a proposal to purchase a ladder truck. Our current ladder truck is a two thousand and five model, uh, of which is scheduled to be replaced in twenty twenty-five. We had the opportunity to place that in twenty twenty-five, um, if we act soon. Um, otherwise, we're, we're getting numbers back that we could be pushed into twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven. If that happens, we'll go under the new twenty twenty-seven emissions, which we're now talking. Cummins, who is manufacturer of most of the motors that goes in fire trucks, we're on ninety to a hundred thousand about additional cost for these, these new. So, also, the manufacturers themselves are starting, they were not headed in the right direction. We're going, we, you know, we started this process, I told y'all, we were looking at twenty-four, maybe thirty-six months, where now most manufacturers are thirty-eight to forty. If we get into that, move emissions. You can go ahead and scroll to the next one. Um, what we are proposing is the purchase of a hundred-foot Pearson Forcer. Mid-mount tower unit, uh, that has a hundred four, hundred-foot ladder platform. Um, we are proposing a shorter overall length from our previous truck, uh, which I'll explain in, in a moment. This truck has a tighter turning radius and a lower overall height. What we found when we were searching, you know, in ladder trucks and talking to these manufacturers, is, you know, fire trucks have gotten bigger and bigger, anybody remembers, you know, years ago, fire trucks were relatively small. And as time went, they've gotten larger, that has not changed even with ladder trucks, ladder trucks have been bigger and bigger. Well, when we went to look at these examples of ladder trucks, we looked around at the towns we were in. They had very wide, open streets, trees, shopping malls, strip malls, parking lots everywhere. And we just don't have that here. We are a, a very tight and dense, uh, small town, so we kind of pulled the reins on what we were looking at. And started really talking to manufacturers about getting a lower profile for our ladder truck. And so we found that in Pierce, um, our current ladder truck is forty-seven feet and eleven inches long. Pierce can go up or down to forty-one feet annually, uh, if you can scroll down to the next one, I think that demonstrates the difference of what we're talking about. The top one is very similar to our current ladder truck, and the bottom one is the one that we are proposing. Um, what this does is it, it gives us ability to take streets without the back end swinging into the other lane and causing, causing issues. Um, and you know, an example, Aggerd and Williamson, that's a sharp turn going, going right at the intersection coming. Percy Drive, the same thing with Colander, uh, really tight. When you have that bucket swinging out, it kind of causes, you know, some issues, and we won't completely eliminate that, but we will definitely, you know, kind of combating that challenge that we have. You know, and another part of the reason that we need to go lower profile with our truck is university. So, the old section of university there in the wall, you have to drive on sidewalks to get to a lot of buildings. Same for the global campus, you know, a lot of that area, we have to drive sidewalks and under those trees. So that's, that's one of the reasons that we really looked for a shorter truck over overall height. What Pierce is able to do is they have been able to engineer their ladder down to a five-section fly, to give us even more versatility when we're there setting up, and you can go to the next, next slide down. So we, we discovered that we needed, you know, a shorter truck to really maneuver the streets that we have here more safely. Uh, but we also look in at plans for development like Park Northwest, which is coming, which is gonna have those three or four-story tall buildings, uh, when you go in, they have, you know, the buildings up on the street and the sidewalk and then the parking, well, add all that up, we're looking at nineteen to twenty feet from the street to the building. Well, and you can, you can scroll into the next one. That only really allows us twenty feet to do the ladder operation. To use it to its fullest extent, as you can see, um, the Pierce ladder truck only requires twenty foot. Our current ladder truck requires thirty-eight. So that's another, uh, reason that we, Pierce is, we're, we're still combating those challenges that we have with our current. And you can, you can go down to, uh, to the last. The reason this is important on a tall building is the diagram you see in green is the proposed truck. At twenty feet away from the building, we can hit everything with our bucket that you see in green. With our current ladder truck, which is what the red represents, we lose that part in front of the building, because we don't have enough room to swing the So looking at what's fu- you know, coming down with future development and the streets being closer to buildings. Plus downtown is a similar situation, plus the university is a similar situation. Plus, we have the five-story apartment building coming to replace, we really think this is the truck that is going to allow us to really take advantage of everything, it's ladder truck. So with that, um, price of this truck is two million seven thousand three hundred and ninety-eight dollars. On top of that, I'm asking.
Saying that. Do I? How that feel coming out?
Practicing.
I told Kathy this whole time, I said, this is making me sick. Because when we started this process, we were looking at one point nine, so. And even just a couple of months ago, the same truck, we're looking at one point nine. Well, we've had several policy increases then, and to give you an example of how much acceleration there is market right now with inflation, is this exact truck more booked for a field ordered in twenty twenty-one, the delivery two months ago, is one of the ones we looked at. Four million. And so, you know, part of the roller coaster has been, you know, figuring out the prices of these trucks. And, and each one of them is going up, and the, if we wait and get into those emissions, we're looking at several at least two hundred more thousand from the price projection that we got for delivery. That's right.
So how many manufacturers, obviously, do request, proposal now seems kind of like, you know, you know, you're just doing requests, hope that you can buy one, not necessarily, we don't have a lot of options, do we?
No, and, and, and actually, there's a lot of manufacturers that will do a fire. There's very few that will do, that actually manufacture ladder trucks. Now, there's a couple manufacturers that will do a ladder truck, but they're not ladder truck manufacturers. We tried to stick with just ladder truck manufacturers. So we ended up talking, well, we talked to three, we looked at four different manufacturers, and there's only seven, I think, in the country that really specialize in ladder trucks that we were able to find. So it's, it's kind of a, it's kind of a small amount of choices, plus Pearson is the only one that'll do that truck. Down to size that we.
So, Chief, in addition to our tr- ladder truck, you know, being one twenty-one years old when we're twenty-two years old by the time we would get a new one. What currently is the length of the ladder? How far, how many stories does it currently reach?
So currently, the ladder itself is ninety-five foot, we're only gaining five feet when it comes to that. But what we're doing with this ladder truck is, so our current ladder truck, it has a ladder on it. It is only rated, and the term is used as an escape ladder, it's actually not rated for rescues. So it's only if something happens with the bucket that firefighters could escape down. Pierce, this will be a fully certified, you know, ladder that can be used, not only with the bucket, but also sending, descending, so if we had to bring a string of people out, you know, for the four-story window, it's capable.
Currently, our truck is not rated for that, so if there's a fire in a large building, apartment complex, condominiums, dormitory, whatever, technically, we're not supposed to get them out.
It, it's not rare. We gotta do, but that is not rare.
Also, Chief, you were talking.
Situation where you would have to have it on feet.
So, a hundred foot really only gets us about two fifth or six stories, because we don't have setbacks.
Right.
So, but depending on where the setback is, you, you lose a lot of feet from.
So, so what you're saying is twin legs and the university was driving this, have to have this.
To this, this style ladder truck, yes.
In the letter that we received in the packet, it's a different price, so you're saying that that's changed since that time you got that letter?
Uh, yes, it did, the, the, the price of this truck has changed four, three times, four, three times in the last.
It's all one point nine somewhere in the distance.
Well, it was two, yeah, it was two million twenty-seven, at one point nine four five with the.
I'm, I'm actually asking for a twenty thousand dollar contingency, uh, which is worth a two million twenty-seven thousand. Because right now, we're, we're wanting to contract with Pierce to make the truck. When you go actually sit down with engineers, there will be opportunities made here and there, plus the striking for the trouble.
And one thing that I remember you saying, when you had your rankings or ratings, what, what were you rated at was very high? And it, the, the length of the ladder would have increased that.
So.
And which would then help with people's, um, insurance and for their homes, right?
Part of the big formula for that ISO inspection is, you know, getting credit for the ladder truck. To get full credit, you have to have a hundred foot, so that's where the hundred foot really comes in. Is it gonna change our grade from a two? Probably not, but it's a number that goes into that factor, you know?
There are also somewhere where I saw, and I apologize, I meant to keep the screen up, um, if we order within a certain time, we get eighty-one thousand dollars.
So, i- if we were to commit to prepaying for this truck, we'd get an eighty-one thousand five hundred dollar discount.
About the admissions, the admission changes, significant admission change.
So, I haven't been able to find details, this was just past December twentieth, twenty-two. But I pulled from the EPA's website, um, from their website, it says that, that this new mission standards is eighty percent stronger than the current standards. So then, I imagine this is gonna be first.
So, you may have talked about it before, but what would be the plans for the old?
Who, we would put it out to sale, and with, honestly, with the price of trucks going up, I think, you know, at first I've talked, when we first started this process, I talked to a few people, said we could get, one of them said two hundred and fifty, one of them said five hundred thousand. So we can look at getting some of that money back and selling the truck, but, you know, the four years you put on it.
In order to get the prepaid discount, what exactly prepaid imply in this case, like?
Two means.
We have, we have to like.
Write him a check for two million plus.
Like with the order? Or before it's delivered?
The prepaid means to be.
Order?
With that order.
You don't, you don't have, um,
Could change.
The, um, recommendations for how to pay for that.
I guess, if, if the board were interested in prepaid, know that I, I don't know, my recommendation would be to prepaid. Go to that a little bit, uh, but if the board were interested in prepaid, um, option you would have right now is to take it out of fund balance. There would be sufficient funds and fund balance to do that. Does save you eighty-one, eighty-one thousand dollars.
How much interest could you have earned on that two million dollars over the course of two years?
It's eighty.
Right, and, um, you know, I, I, I haven't looked recently at our investments we have with North Carolina Capital Management. I'm not sure what our, what our current rate of return is, I mean, it's a variable rate of return. Last year, I think we made seven thousand dollars in interest all year, because we were point zero one. Uh, we've currently made a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars in the current fiscal year. Now, that's roughly six million dollars probably in various accounts that we have with them, so, um, I think certainly over the short, short term, I think our rate of return might be better than we'd be giving up. For three years, hard to tell, who, you know, who knows where interest rates are gonna go. The, so you, you could do it from fund amounts if you chose to. My, in my, my, my recommendation, uh, would be to not do it. Wanted, it ties our hands significantly, that this money is already put into, or taken out of our control. Doesn't give us chance to deal with delays in delivery or heaven forbid, company goes out of business, uh, declares bankruptcy. Hey, that's an awful lot of money to have hanging out there and, and not have anything in, in our hands. And I'm, I'm conservative enough to say that I, I would prefer to hang on to our money. I think we will earn that eighty-one thousand dollars over the two to three years it's gonna take to get it delivered.
From, from a fire chief's perspective, uh, there's a lot of big parts of the truck, two million dollar trucks. I really wouldn't want to write a check for something that we haven't been able to test out, make sure everything is built to specifications at an acceptance test.
You're saying you lose leverage?
Well, yes, pretty much, and, and, you know. Well, yes, pretty much. And and, you know, you're talking this kind of money, what you order, you know, you want to be right.
So we're trying to decide this now for inflation, so we don't next year it's not three million dollars. Can you explain a little more about the emissions? Like, are we trying to, we think it's gonna be more restrictive to us with having this?
So so the big, I don't know the deep, the full details of what is in this admissions that they that they passed in December. I'm looking at it from a perspective that they're already projecting this to be a hundred thousand dollar increase if we get into those motors. So, and, you know, the the mission standards aren't really focused on emergency services. They're trying to hit these trucks out on the road. They they probably should be exempt like the military would, you know, is, but but we're not. And so if we we ran, if we took delivery of the same truck in twenty twenty-seven, the number I got back was right at two point two billion. If we lose two years building the process, so we wouldn't get it till twenty twenty-seven. We have those new, we'd be the first generation of these motors with emissions. Never been a good thing.
Chief, last time they made major changes to the emission protocols. How did, how did, how did that go?
Well, that, the the last major change change that I can remember is when they required putting death fluid in all of the trucks and there has been several issues with every truck that I know of that that has death fluid that is specifically to that death. So, and I, but see, we we only have two trucks that are under those standards right now, so.
In in a previous position, we have, we have purchased an engine early on in that transition and there there were a lot of operational issues. You you had, I mean, there was idling time, as I recall, then you have to let things warm up differently and uh, I mean, it was a it was a pretty significant operational issue that they had to deal with and you said the additives.
They're they're just designed for trucks running up and down the highway, doing several hundred miles a run. Fire trucks go a mile and then they come back to the station they cut off. And what happens is that stuff builds up and doesn't have time to burn off. And so we have to run our trucks just sitting in the parking lot for a couple hours to get it to reach in, you know? It it's not designed for emergency services. The 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 mission is designed for trucks on.
And the I recall last time they, I mean, they've adopted the standards, but they haven't adopted engine designs. So now they have to design the engines to meet the new standards. You know, brand new models, first generation, we think this is gonna work just fine and we get them out on the road. Not that I'm trying to skirt the emission, future emission standards, but I think I think delaying the purchase to achieve a new, you know, to in order to come in under those new mission standards, I think is a, is a it's a significant cost to us, both in dollars, certainly, but as well as time.
And potentially safety, because the current truck is already on its last leg essentially. Been out of service multiple times already.
It's probably been out of service total this year, probably. Maybe close to two.
I know there's the period in the last half, last quarter last year was like twenty-five percent of the time it was in the top, so. The we'd originally were were thinking of coming and talking to you about a a sole source purchase. Until we realized that Pierce has actually gone through the bid process that was run by the Houston Galveston area cooperative. Uh, so they've actually gone out and done the competitive bid. Pierce won the bid for this style ladder truck. Um, so I think from that aspect, we we've gone through that bid process. We're a member with H G C. So we can utilize their bid process and so that part is covered. So this is just a like a bid if we were gonna use the state bid process for new cruisers or something like that.
Chief, how long is this style of truck around?
So this, this particular model for Pierce started roughly around twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So we're about five or six years in to this design.
And if they, do you know if they've had any issues with it?
I, they're they are becoming popular. To that, I mean, more and more, just in the last few months when we really started looking at ladder trucks. See.
Remember, maybe a month ago, Rich, you sent us an email, uh, saying like from ten bucks. But that there could be a chance to help get a grant for this.
There was, and at the time, we were looking at this as a sole source purchase. Which we we too, we were not convinced that the federal government would not, would allow us to do sole source. They wanted to see a bid process. Turns out it was actually a bid process, which we didn't realize at the time. In follow-up conversations I had actually this past week with Tom Tillis's office. They indicated that, you know, this whole earmark process that the federal government is reinstituting uh, would not be an avenue. It's not a great avenue for fire departments. Always safety, being police, first responders being police. Every day, but not too much fire departments. They referred us to the AFG.
AFG.
Which is.
Uh, American, this is firefighter.
Okay. Uh, which is an annual grant process that has funded vehicles. But the amount of funding nationwide. I recall like three hundred million and twenty-five percent of that can go to vehicles.
Yeah, it it the amount changes every year. This year was three hundred and some million. Uh, the breakdown in how they distribute those funds is twenty-five percent goes to career departments, the bigger cities. Twenty-five percent goes to that middle tier that's part volunteer, part paid like we do. Twenty-five percent goes to all volunteer fire departments and then other twenty-five percent gets split up between Department of Defense, ambulance services, things like that. So at the, at the very minimum, we are competing for twenty-five percent of those funds. Of which only twenty-five percent can be used for vehicle acquisition. So you're twenty-five percent of twenty-five percent. And then when we ran the numbers, if you divided it evenly between the states and the territories that come out to four hundred some thousand dollars.
Yeah.
That's not how they do it. I just wanted to put it to perspective, you know, who we're really competing for when we do this. So, and preparing for a grant, getting the right signatures for looking twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
Um, and delaying, you know, waiting, you know, apply for that and then waiting to get that decision. You know, put us you know, months down the road before decision would be handed out. I was just doing the numbers in my head for vehicles, that'd be about eighteen million dollars nationwide. So the ladder truck for Elon being two million, that'd be a significant portion of whatever's available. With need, need everywhere. So, I mean, it's a, it's a tough competition. So anyway, we we did not pursue that AFG grant for the, for the ladder truck for that reason. We didn't want to lose the opportunity that we had. Because we, we didn't want to delay the, delay the decision till we heard from on AFG.
So this evening you're asking for us to consider approving the purchase. And then we'll figure out financing later.
Correct. Likely, we will do some sort of installment loan like as we did on Engine Eight. Yeah, we have time to, I mean, we're we're committing to it tonight. We'd have time to make those arrangements on whether we ultimately decide to do that, which seems to make sense. I mean, spreading the payments out over in fifteen years, what are we decided to do? But we do not have to have that in hand tonight.
I have, my concern around asking the emissions question was that it was one factor. There are many factors here. The one factor that seems to be me to have the heaviest weight. And there are so many factors, so many parts of this falling into place. That, while I would have the same terms you do as far as first year, something new. You're getting a product that seems to fit your needs in a better way. Seems to be able to do what we need to do, I think. That's worth it. I think that it's, it's hard as, you know, we want, we want to try to go green. I I wish it was a metric, but but that ain't gonna happen. So, um, so my, my, my sense is, is that putting all the factors and weighing them all. I would I would, I don't know if you were ready for a motion, but I would make the motion that go ahead and accept this and commit to purchasing this truck.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other questions, comments, discussion?
Point nine million to this, and so I would, I would hate to. And I go back to the the East Hager Water Line, right? You know, years ago, and now look what it's this, this only looks like it's gonna go in that direction, like eat it, we're gonna spend money on it. Do we spend two million-ish or spending three and a half million in a year and a half from now? It's one of those purchases that it's tough to say out your mouth, makes you feel sick.
It really does.
But we're talking about lives here and that's, but you can't put a price on that.
Sure.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Relation. Have a new baby in twenty-five to forty-one months. All right, moving on to reports, we will start with the town manager.
Do you want to formally table the?
We, we discussed that in old.
Actually, okay.
No, we moved it to next week's agenda. So that doesn't require about.
Only comment I'll make is I respect that budget liaison committee to they're interested in sitting down to go over the budget status, uh, we are seeing several increases, uh, since our budget tree. Placement. So it's just some direction to figure out how to, how to achieve the the balanced budget that we all are striving for.
Okay, thank you, Stephanie.
Uh, we had our first meeting of the diversity equity. I want to say inclusion, but we are calling it diversity equity belonging, which is a great name as well. Um, had two wonderful members come. We have loved to have more. Um, currently, we have three Diane, yeah. So, um, very sharp members who are going to add a lot to our community and add a lot to this committee. So appreciate them taking their time to be a part of this and it's a very important issues that very important issues that we're looking at. So also like to talk about, but I'm gonna save something for Quinn.
So we did have our art committee meeting this past Wednesday and we're gonna have middle school, uh, Williams or Western Middle and Elon Elementary School Art inside here and out there. So it's gonna be nice. We're gonna hang it up on April thirtieth. April thirtieth is yes, reception of it. So it should be nice, you know, that's something we're trying to do, definitely bringing art into Elon and, you know, we're thinking about that different types of structural within the town. I want to thank Mary Catherine for really helping with this link process. I mean, it's something that I think is gonna be beneficial to our town and just our county as a whole. And the Arbor Day event was awesome. Uh, my daughter enjoyed it. It was a little, little brisk, but it was fun and we look forward to the bunny hop. This Saturday starts at, and I think for one to four-year-olds. Like you need to get there like eight thirty if you want to get a single egg. But, uh, it's, it's gonna be a good.
Not just a mass start where they all run.
They have it broke up in sections. So one to four-year-olds are at ten, then five to eight-year-olds, ten thirty, and then eight to twelve-year-olds are eleven.
They're early for parking and a spot place to that.
Then you'll get eight and an egg. Be great.
Egg's all expensive now.
I was unable to make it to the sustainability. Night. So I wish, I do, did you guys approve uh, bylaws and stuff?
Did approve the bylaw. Um, and Sustainability Committee will be meeting the fourth Wednesday. Every month at eight thirty here in the council chambers. Um, at least we're trying to do every month for this first year. Recognizing that some summer or holidays might be canceled. Got a lot of great ideas, uh, that we're exploring moving forward.
Good, uh, meeting with, uh, around the idea of, uh, having collection points for styrofoam um, in the community. And, uh, my hope is that we will, in cooperation with the university. Because a lot of it will be about willingness of people to bring their, their, their lighter phone with them. And it will make a big difference, really making a difference for tiny houses. Trailers that they're bringing out. Do collection. We're filling up the, uh, the one that we have right now once a week.
At the Methodist church, correct?
That's really all I have.
I haven't seen that trailer. You should check it out. It's nice and clean and slick. It's not an eyesore. Like at first, I was thinking a trailer city where there's just gonna be an hospital, but it's.
Wait, I I enjoy going to the Arbor Day. I thought it was great. Bit, uh, nice to be able to honor two citizens with a free plan. Honor is great. Our families out there. A lot of student volunteers from local high school were there. I see them in with the theme doing on that. Need to work on the LMO. Slowly getting closer. A lot of good discussions coming up now, which I think is gonna help us to come up with a proposal that's gonna be attended the TAC Committee. Focus on transportation. They're looking for, uh, they're also began to submit proposals for projects. Sweet Johnson and Bass and family have been successful in getting some projects, by law, as example, but spoke to Lori and those are some of the things that she's gonna try to, I was on, try to submit some things that might be able to get a high score to the next couple of years. And I want to thank Mary Catherine. It's been a lot of questions asked and I know it's been a venture for you and I appreciate the work.
I echo what Lynn said about the art. I'm not on the art committee, but I am on the downtown. I think those two kind of go hand in hand and hopefully a believer and I think that can make our downtown. So that we do have a downtown committee meeting this week, but unfortunately I've got work commitment, so I cannot go, but.
I too, I'm looking forward to the bunny hop after the Arbor Day event. And one question that came up is why do we celebrate Arbor Day on Arbor Day? And the reason is, is because North Carolina celebrates Arbor Day on a different day when is better for planting. Found that out. Found that out. Um, so I had to ask, I'm like, why are we having Arbor Day in March when it is like April twenty-eighth or something? So that is the reason as to why. Um, so looking forward to the bunny hop also, um. On Friday evening last week, lots of social district, um, enjoyment going on. So I'm excited for the block party that is scheduled for April twenty-first. Um, to officially kick that off with our summer concert series or nice weather concert series, we call it that, not summer. Um, so, you know, just exciting things happening throughout and looking forward to that. Also. The students, um, are here not too much longer, so. Kind of give and take as to all the good things and the, you know, the lower energy of town, as I would say. Um, but, you know, it, it also brings more people out, I think, from the community when the students aren't here, so. We hate to see you go, but we also love to see other people come, so. Um, that's it. Do I have a motion to adjourn? You have a second?
Second.
I want to say aye.
Aye.